Will call our meeting order to conclude rise to the indication of how to predilection to fight our country. Commissioner Sharman.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the past two weeks since we last met. Especially for me, I'm going to be a little selfish and thank you for the advice and wisdom you've given me through the struggle I've had and as a special person that you put my life to guide and remind me that there are things that I don't understand that I will in the future. And I wish that the city can continue to provide positive things for our city, our citizens, even though we're going to have to cut back and struggle, we're going to make tough choices and it will be a struggle, but we will do what we need to do. In your name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike and welcome all here to see. We'll start beginning off with a budget workshop. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioner. My pleasure to present the proposed operating budget for fiscal year 26. Budget as presented does include a recommendation for a small military adjustment. Workshop tonight does not require any action on your behalf and I will happily turn it over to Laura for presentation of the budget.
John did not warn me, this is a little bit longer tonight.
That's my first time saying the presentation 21% of the entire budget.
But Mike would not say this entire thing. Tonight we'll be walking through the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget. We put together a presentation that will explain how the city budget works, what are government services and how are they funded? We'll review the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget, we'll also go over what's next. We wanted to get a brief overview of how city budgets work. We use the budget as a financial roadmap. We look at operating revenues. Those revenues are the property taxes, sales taxes, utility fees, and these are revenues that come in year after year. We also look at the operating expenses such as fire, lease, parks, roads, maintenance, and other ongoing services, and we also pay attention to our reserves. Those are our fund balance and we use that as a savings account and we set those aside for emergencies, unexpected costs, and one-time projects. It's important that our ongoing revenues are able to cover our ongoing expenses. This ensures stability in city services year after year and provides some cuts to essential services. Reserves play a very specific role in our financial health. The reserves are used to respond to emergencies such as hurricanes, economic downturns, and unexpected costs. We can use them for one-time needs for major equipment and capital projects, and we can also use them for short-term bridge for temporary revenue loss while we look at long-term solutions that are being developed. Some people have asked, why can't you use the reserves to fund the budget? The answer is because the reserves would burn out quickly leaving us with no cushion for disasters or downturns. It can also lead to credit rating downgrades and can create a structural imbalance where the expenses are outpacing revenues. Our commitment is clear, ongoing services must be funded by ongoing revenues and reserves will be preserved for emergencies and one-time projects by maintaining a long-term fiscal stability for our community. So now we'd like to go over what are the government services and how are they funded? Local government has fund accounting. These services are organized through a structure known as fund accounting where the system is essential for ensuring transparency, legal compliance, and responsible financial management. The city's funds comprising the general fund, enterprise funds, and special revenue funds. The general fund is a primary operating fund for the city and they cover the core services such as police, fire, parks, administrative services, and those revenues come from property taxes, sales taxes, and other governmental taxes. Whereas our enterprise funds, such as my businesses, are funded through user fees. These include water, wastewater, solid waste, stormwater. And then our restricted funds are the special revenue funds. They account for revenues that are legally restricted for specific purposes such as the impact fees and the CRAs. Some people have asked, why can't you use recycling revenues that you're saving to use for public safety? You can't intermingle the funds. The enterprise funds have their own financial statements, so the savings that we receive from suspending the recycling go right back into the solid waste fund. And same with the general fund, the general fund, you can't use taxes to pay for and supplement for the solid waste workers. Now that we have that, we'll go over the proposed budget for fiscal year 2026. We built this budget with several priorities in mind. Some of our priorities include preserving long-term fiscal sustainability, a focus on essential services, public safety, protecting the city's infrastructure including road surfacing, facility improvements, building science and technology, and also keeping mindful of maintaining adequate reserves. The upcoming fiscal year, the total city budget is 180 million. We are using zero-based budgeting approach. There are no new positions included in this budget. There's a focus on public safety and the budget maintains a general fund 20% fund balance. The total city revenues are projected to come in at 169 million for fiscal year 2026. Property taxes, which make up the largest portion of the general fund, represents 18% of the total city revenues. Other significant sources include charges for services, state shared revenues, grants, and other smaller categories. This mix of revenues will allow the city to fund city operations. This chart shows how expenditures are spread across the funds. The general fund totals 68 million, which covers most of the city's services, like we said, for the fire, police, parks, recreation, admin. Enterprise funds total 97 million. Their self-supporting include utilities and water. We also have the smaller funds for the CRA and special revenues, which total 10 million, and producer funds at 5 million. As you can see, the general and the enterprise funds make up the majority of the spending, so we'll be focusing those for tonight's analysis. So the general fund is the backbone of the city. The general fund offers all of the essential services that our residents and businesses rely on. Within the general fund, we provide public safety through peace and fire. We maintain our roads and parks. We manage planning and development. We deliver a wide range of administrative and community services. These are the services that directly, most directly affect our residents' daily lives. So how do we fund those services? We fund those services through the general fund revenues. The main source of the general fund revenues comes from Avalon revenues, but these revenues aren't enough to support the entire operations of the general fund. We have to rely on other revenue streams, but some of those streams are less predictable. For fiscal year 2026, general fund totals 68 million in expenditures. All that 57% is allocated to public safety showing our strong commitment to keeping the community safe. General government accounts for 14%, parks and recreation at 99%, municipal fire management at 7%, roads at 5%, net service at 4%, transport to CRA at 3%, and economic development at 3%. As I mentioned a little bit earlier, Avalon revenues are used to support a wide range of city services, but there is a challenge. Avalon revenues alone are not sufficient to maintain current levels of service. We need to have other revenue sources to fill the gap. The problem is, some of these revenue sources are unstable and they can change year over year. For example, the fiscal year 2026 budget projects 2.9 million in investment earnings. Those are tied to market conditions and they are not guaranteed. While they can be helpful, they should not be relied upon to fund day-to-day operations because they do lack stability and they require long-term, flexibility for required long-term commitments. In summary, the general fund faces both opportunities and challenges. We're investing in critical services, but we must be careful to manage volatile revenues and rising costs. Our focus is on balancing today's needs with tomorrow's stability. At current levels, we are nearly balanced, meaning at the 4.5 mils, we're nearly balanced. However, the balance includes volatile revenues and least fund balance reserves at 17%. Staff recommends reserve balance of at least 20%. To achieve this, we either need to add additional recurring revenue stores or reduce expenditures by approximately 2.2 million. If you were to look at cutting expenses, when looking at cutting expenses, it's important to realize that not all dollars are equal. Some expenditures are restrictive, meaning that they're legally tied to specific uses from specific revenues. Others are unrestricted, meaning we can allocate them where they need it most, and understanding the distinction is critical when making full decisions about resource allocation. In the general fund for fiscal year 2026, our unrestricted expenditures totaled 19 million. So if we were to cut 2.2 million, it would have to come from the unrestricted expenditures that are not tied to a specific revenue purpose. When we calculate them out, that's a total of 11.4% coming from personnel, operating, capital, and other uses. So staff is recommending a military rate increase. Military rate increase of 4.8 would generate an approximate 2.2 million in additional revenues for fiscal year 2026, and it would bring the fund balance reserve to 20%. We are recommending tax increase because it funds ongoing services with ongoing revenues. It addresses the challenge of operating expenses outpaying recurring revenues, reserves reserves for emergencies and one-time needs, and maintains long-term fiscal stability for our community. This chart shows the estimated Avalon revenues at the current rate of 4.5, and what the increase to revenues would be at 4.65, 4.75, and 4.85. Staff is recommending the 4.85 because it would generate the 2.2 million in additional recurring stable revenues that we're looking for. The chart also shows that the estimated property tax would be for a home with assessed value of 200,000 and a homestead exemption of 50,000. The increase from the current 4.5 mils to 4.85 mils would equate to approximately $53 a year. This graph shows the actual city mileage, which is in the blue, and compares it to what the military rate would be if we had moved it with the CPI. That's in the orange. The CPI adjusted mileage rate would equal to 5.8 mils if we were to move the military rate with the CPI. We are proposing 4.85. Currently, at 4.5, the city has one of the lowest tax rates within our central Florida municipalities. This chart shows the general fund operating revenues versus costs of services that the general fund provides. This shows a trend from 2015 to 2026. In the blue line, you see the general fund operating revenues, and red line is the general fund expenditures. Now, if you remember, the operating revenues are the recurring steady revenues. Those include sources from taxes, charges for services, permits, fees, and special assessments. It does not include unpredictable revenue sources such as investment earnings, sales of assets, or contributions. We wanted to show this to show why we're looking at operating revenues to fund recurring expenditures. Historically, the general fund maintained a positive margin where operating revenues exceeded expenditure service, however, that trend has reversed. Beginning in 2024, the cost of delivering city services began exceeding the operating revenues available to support them. This marks a critical shift in financial sustainability. The increase in expenditures is driven by rising personnel costs, inflationary pressures in goods and services, and investments in public safety infrastructure. While the revenues have grown, they are not keeping pace with the cost of maintaining and enhancing city services. There is a structural imbalance that indicates a long-term concern that we are analyzing. While the budgets have been balanced using all sources of revenues, but have not been unbalanced, we are looking at recurring revenues to cover recurring costs. The crossover point 2024 of recurring stable revenues signals the beginning of potential structural imbalance, but corrective action is not taken. Some of the reasons of why our costs are outpacing our increases in revenues, this is an inflation graph that shows from 1998 to 2024, from 1998 to 2020, inflation graph raised gradually along with revenues. Then 2020 to 2024, the cost of services and cost of equipment have outpaced the revenue growth. And minimum wage, this is another factor that's contributed to expenditures increasing at higher pace than revenues. This shows a graph from the minimum wage from 2000 to 2026. From 2000 to 2020, increases in minimum wage are modest and driven largely by market demand. However, beginning in 2021, the pace increase accelerated significantly due to state mandated wage loss. As minimum wage rises, the city must adjust wages at entry-level positions, which leads to upward pressure on other wages to maintain internal equity and avoid wage compression. Wage increases are directly contributing to rising personnel costs, which are one of the largest components of the city's general fund expenditures. And we'll touch on personnel costs, largest driver of department operating costs, which equates to approximately 57% of operating less capital. For fiscal year 2026 budget, through 7.5% wage increases for fire personnel per the flood department union agreements, a 3% quota for non-fire union employees, health insurance increases for the city contribution, and pension contributions which are calculated by the actuary. The city of Winter Garden currently has 398 authorized full-time equivalent employees. There are no new positions proposed for fiscal year 2026 budget, and that means our FTE per 1,000 population at 7.6. The FTE per 1,000 population is a standard metric that measures the size of the city's workforce relative to its population. It helps gauge how many full-time employees municipality has for every 1,000 residents serves. This graph shows our sister municipalities within central Florida. All the municipalities are in blue and Winter Garden is in green. As you can see, Winter Garden has the lowest number of FTE employees per 1,000 residents demonstrating our commitment to lean operations at this fiscal responsibility. This low FTE reflects conservative approach, carefully managing taxpayer dollars while minimizing administrative overhead. Even with fewer employees per capita, Winter Garden continues to deliver outstanding service levels across all departments, including fire, police, parks, and public works. This graph shows our percent of vacancy as of this week. The first column shows the total authorized positions at 398. The second one shows that we have 52 vacancies as of this week and 346 that are filled. So we have a 13% vacancy percentage. This is now from 20% from three years ago. We are targeting below 10%, but we're moving in the right direction with our labor strategies that we've implemented in the past couple of years. For capital improvements, we are proposing 2.3 million in the general fund. These include 1 million for fire, which includes fire vehicle replacements, radios, and building improvements, $650,000 for IT upgrades such as citywide camera system, infrastructure improvements, $516,000 for facilities and physical environment projects, and $110,000 for police equipment such as vehicles and comp systems. Each of these investments addresses safety, efficiency, and long-term reliability. To break down capital for the fire, for the 1 million, we have allocated $135,000 for fire building station improvements, $160,000 for the portable radio replacement fund, which is a recurring funding mechanism that we'll have in the five-year CIP, and $700,000, which is also another replacement fund for the fire vehicle replacements. We have $600,000 for IT with $400,000 for citywide security camera system, $140,000 for sand infrastructure upgrade, and $100,000 for other IT. Physical environment, we've allocated $516,000, of that $100,000 for the city hall chiller replacement funding plan. We have the cemetery at Calumbarium for $100,000, facilities improvements for $100,000, City Hall retrofit, which is funded by the Energy Block Grant, City Hall roof replacement funding plan $50,000, fleet building improvement funding plan $50,000, and boat house demolition $40,000. We've also allocated $110,000 to police with $81,000 to replace a canine vehicle and $30,000 for police phone and radio system. For our streets funds, we have the road impact fee fund and the log tee, which is a local option gas tax fund. We have included 4.5 million allocated for road resurfacing, intersection upgrades, new turn lanes, and safety improvements across the city. As we said earlier, for the enterprise funds, they are different from the general fund. They're legally restricted to services that they provide and they're self-supporting. Services like water, wastewater, stormwater, solid waste are funded directly by use of fees and not property taxes. For fiscal year 2026, enterprise fund revenues total $62 million. This includes utilities, stormwater, solid waste, and true to city. Utility rates are scheduled to increase October 1st in accordance with our bond covenants. A CPI adjustment is recommended for the solid waste fees. We have been able to secure $30 million in grant funding for next fiscal year. That includes $15 million from FDP for the water quality improvement funding for the wastewater treatment plant, $6.64 million from FDP for the alternative water supply to convert subject to sewer, $1.75 million for state appropriations for the wastewater treatment facility, and $6.56 million in CDVG funding for our stormwater. Utilities fund totals $44.5 million with $27 million in capital, $11.5 million operating expenditures, and $5.1 million in personnel services. The utilities operating fund includes divisions for the water wastewater collection and distribution. The water distribution, we have included funds for well filter design and northeast transmission main, and for the wastewater collection divisions, we've included the wastewater treatment plant expansion, which is a recurring for the next couple of years, and T-Cup Springs sewer conversion. Utilities renewal and replacement fund, also known as RNR fund, includes $565,000 in capital for distribution and collection projects, and we have the utilities construction fund with $31 million allocated for wastewater treatment plant expansion funded by the bonds, revenues, and $4 million in reclaimed water projects. The stormwater fund totals $8.9 million for fiscal year 2026, with 5% for personnel services, 7% for operating, and 88% in capital outlay. 88% is of $7.8 million and the majority of that is $6.6 million, which is allocated towards East Winter Garden drainage improvements. Those aren't being funded by the CDVG grant funding. We also have the RNR improvements for stormwater at $800,000 and $500,000 allocated for the stormwater master plan. Solid waste totals $7.4 million with 6% in capital, 28% personnel services, $2.1 million, and 66% or $4.9 million in operating expenditures. I'll turn it over to Mr. Harman. Would you like me to move it forward?
If you would mind, that'd be great. So for large project focus, we're going to focus on water wastewater, East Winter Garden, and our transportation enforcement program. Wastewater treatment facility capacity expansion project as well. In a way, this is the current picture as of August 11th, and we are continuing to focus our efforts on pursuing additional grant funding. Actually, the grant quarters will be bringing back up and we're already prepared to submit those projects, those requests, and continuing forward with the grant. The overall water wastewater capital budget is $62 million. Of those, of that, the largest projects are, again, wastewater capacity expansion. There's a northeast transmission main, which is also a reclaimed water main that will extend from the wastewater plant up Blue Creek and ultimately terminate at the Dreyfus wastewater plant that's on Night Street, the T-Cup Springs sewer conversion project, and some of the water well filter design. East Winter Garden still remains a priority project for us. We're focusing our efforts on moving out of the pilot program in fiscal year 26 for the legacy home renovation program. We will be moving into the design phase for the East Winter Garden street skate. We're continuing with the Xander's Park improvements. We're also including some requests for planning for property redevelopment, to acquire property for purposes of redevelopment, helping new houses, commercial and business redevelopment, and obviously the East Winter Garden drainage improvement project that's funded by CDVG grants. We're continuing to implement the city's transportation policy plan that addresses safety and community management. Components of that traffic include, that program include monitoring, enforcement, control. If you recall, we did improve the installation of red light cameras and school zone cameras around December of last year. And you may have followed some of the most recent news that the vendor that we have hired Red Speed has encountered some technical difficulties in other cities. We have met with those folks to address those issues and it appears that they have been isolated and resolved. So we're going to continue to move forward with the understanding that the normal standard warning period of 30 days will be expanded to 60 days to ensure that we're not experiencing any of those technical issues and that they are fully resolved. So the budget, originally developed, it contemplates some revenue from those systems, but since these issues have surfaced, we have stripped that revenue from the budget and we'll see what comes out of fiscal year with the launching of the red light, the school zone cameras and red light enforcement. We will also continue to use our own staff for enforcement using technology patrol and warning systems. And with that, the next steps will be the first and second public hearing, with the first public hearing scheduled for September 11th at 6:30 PM, followed by the second public hearing on September 25th. And that concludes the presentation. You can have any questions if you may have.
I'm impressed. John Ordon did a great job, knowing and putting the budget together, but also the presentation of the budget. A lot of numbers, a lot of facts here, so as usual, Commissioner, take time to study it, and I would be glad to share my questions and comments with y'all for sitting down with you. But is there any questions, Mr. Harman?
More of a conversation I had with the city manager after we did Oktoberfest. Of course, we've all gotten some emails probably on why you guys cutting the thing, but we also got those emails on why are you doing the fire fee? And we've got to do something. My thought was, we're going to have to do this at some point. If we do it one at a time on cuts, we're going to get bombarded. My thought is we go to a budget workshop in the future, not now and not this time because we don't have time, but in the future, where we start with zero events, zero events, and then we can have what we want us to put back in. So start from zero at a workshop in the future is our thought. Go ahead, Mayor.
I was just going to say, everybody's going to have to have their advantage, but so you can end up with all of them, but.
Well, yeah, my thought is, I agree. Yeah, I actually agree with that point, and that's the idea is, if we try to cut one at a time, it would never happen, but if we start now, what are your reporting lines? We might get somewhere. But yeah, as it is now, it's not, the timing of it is not yet. So that's, we're going to have a future budget struggle next year, and we're probably going to have that, that conversation in the interim.
If I may, for some outside, you know, obviously, it is our goal from a staff perspective that just if we ultimately get this approved with the recommendation that we're not just stopping there, we're going to continue to evaluate the budget. We're going to continue to look for areas to offer some savings. And then periodically throughout fiscal year, as we come up with ideas and suggestions, we'll refer that back to the commission in a public setting, whether it be a workshop or during a regular commission meeting, and say, these are areas that we can identify that we're, where we can seek to issue some savings. So right now, we're kind of looking at maybe the second meeting in October, but hold the first one of those. You know, and I think the budget that is presented and prepared gives us the flexibility to, to continue to move forward. It gives us the flexibility to shore up our reserves to address some of the concerns that we have about our revenues, you know, funding, ongoing expenditures, but it also allows us to kind of be able to really thoroughly look at this and evaluate any of those potential savings and then bring them back. I give you just one example, we're like that marketing and how much money we spend in marketing and what we can do to move away from more, you know, hard copy prints and put it into a digital format and what are the savings and what does that look like? So we will continue to do that throughout fiscal year.
Just like Taizen, my Mr. Toto.
And Mayor, I 100% agree with you. It's going to be, staff is already going to give us the easy stuff to cut, like that's, it's the stuff that the citizens, the events, those things that we're going to get those emails on, that's the one that, that's going to be the tough stuff.
Always a choice, and we do want to look at how we can monetize this, help minimize the actual expenses associated with it. We will certainly do a very thorough analysis. They've done a very thorough analysis thus far. Laura, I warned her out with graphs and information meetings, and so she's tolerated me, she's done. She's done a great job, and all of our staff has done a great job with this budget. Transitioning to the zero-based budget was a big challenge, and we started this process early in March because we knew it was going to be a big lift. But to, everybody knows that what we're looking at in the future, we're looking at additional operating costs, whether it be from collective bargaining agreements. We all know that there's probably going to be some sort of tax reform that we're going to be faced with in the future. You know, there's a lot of organizations, counties, cities that are looking at implementing some new fire schedules, and those offer significant costs, significant costs for us to take considerations.
So, one question. Like Teacup Springs on our subject to sewer conversion, the state mandated it, and we were pursuing grants, which I love that, you know, our city does let our staff, we always go after grant money, which really helps. Have we heard anything further on that yet?
Well, we did get the grant for $6.4 million. The plans are at 90% plans, they go back and make some additional changes. We are looking at additional grant funding that would provide for revenue to pay for onsite conversion causing the actual subject tank abandonment and connection to the sewer system. And so I think we're probably 36,900 AC.
First of the year, probably the best. I couldn't remember the number, but that's very helpful, you know, for the residents.
I think the engineer estimate puts it about $7.1 million. We've got $6.4 million in grant funding, so.
Huge.
So almost 100% paid.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. For our regular meeting, approval amendments from our meeting on August 14th, they have been distributed. Any additions, additions, or corrections? Carry none, we need a motion. We have a second. We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries unanimously. To approve of memorandum of understanding and amendment two revenue agreement, time extension. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As the mayor said, this is a memorandum of understanding and a second amendment to the agreement that is between the city and St. John's for the material placement and dredging of Lake Apokka in front of Newton Park. Design work is completed, and the MOU states that St. John's will apply for and hold the permit until 100% of the funding of this project has been found. The city is working on trying to find funding, grant money. Friends of Lake Apokka is helping to look for that. St. John's is working on it. Once funding is found, St. John's would convert the permit over to us, and we would move forward with it with their assistance, building or constructing the project. Amendment two extends the design and permitting agreement, which was entered into in January of 2023 and then extended again in August of '24, and that would extend to September 30th of 2026. There are no financial obligations with these agreements, and we are not required to construct the project. Without staff, request the board approve memorandum of understanding and amendment two. We have the answer to your questions.
Questions from the commission? Carry none, we need a motion.
Questions to approve memorandum of understanding and amendment two?
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, like sign. Motion carried unanimously. Recommendation to approve amendment to non-explicit franchise agreement. Yes, sir.
Plant Street Recycling has started working, as all of you have seen on the news and in the newspaper. They are requesting to amend their original agreement to allow them to operate outside of the gated neighborhoods, which would be on public streets. The reason for this is since they've opened, they have received calls from all over the city asking to expand their services. The request is to amend that agreement and allow them to operate until such time as they use class four vehicles or higher, which is vehicles that weigh over 14,000 pounds, typically it's your super duty trucks or duallys or box trucks, things like that, which they will ultimately get to garbage truck style, but not, not for quite a while. The city would love to continue supporting them and make these services available for the residents, so staff will request that the board approve the amendment and non-explicit franchise agreement and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement. We'd be happy to answer questions.
Questions from the commission?
It's one door closes and other opens.
I think it's great. We need a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carried unanimously.
That was.
Yes, sir. Recommendation, authorize city manager execute an award construction services. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is an exciting evening for me and my staff. We come before you, as you know, Fire Station 21 is a critical project to meet our city's growth and service needs. We received four strong proposals in response to RFP 25-0001 for the construction of Fire Station 21. After thorough evaluation, MCI Mulligan Contractors, Constructors, excuse me, was ranked the most responsive and responsible proposer. Their base proposal totaled $6,466,275,042. This evening, staff recommends authorizing the city manager to execute and award the construction services contract to MCI Mulligan Constructors, including a 10% contingency for a total authorization of $7,112,902,96. We'd be happy to answer any questions, ma'am.
But this is lower than what's in the budget.
Yes, sir. Correct.
What do I approve, Mayor, before he changes his mind?
We need, so many questions. So, okay, you're going to make a motion to approve?
Yes.
It, okay, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate you all. Recommendation to award purchase order to USSI. Yes, sir.
This is a purchase order, as you said, for USSI LLC to inspect and repair our sanitary sewer system for inflow and infiltration. The work is done by pumping smoke into the lines where they find leaks, and then they repair it. Typically, the leaks are from either clean outs or manhole covers. Their estimates include a number of seals, plugs, and caps. It gives a price for them. If they go over that number, yes, the same price will be honored. They give those estimates based on their experience on how many are there and the number of manholes that are in that system. They have revised their estimate, it was distributed to you tonight. There is a mobilization and demobilization fee for $3,500 that was removed. And with that, staff will request the board approve the purchase order in the amount of $137,040 to perform the work. That does include the $3,500, that's just there as a contingency if they go over. But if not, we won't use any of that money, or we'll use less, hopefully less repairs needed.
That's good.
Happy to answer questions.
Questions from the commission?
Is there a stuff that sucks, Matt?
Elevators are worse.
I'm going to say this too. But if you don't have it, that's worse.
Yes, okay. It's pretty crappy.
Okay, let's move to a version. Question approved. We have the election. Okay, a motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you, sir. Site plan for 244 West Story Road. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The applicant is requesting site plan approval to permit the development of a new commercial building on a 2.3 acre property located at 244 West Story Road. You all may recall that this is the location of a former convenience store, which fell into disrepair and was demolished in 2018. The new owners want to redevelop the property with a new single-story, 2,250 square foot commercial building with associated site improvements. Given the site's close proximity to residential properties, the building has been designed to be more residential in character and form with a pitched metal roof and a series of covered entry torches along the front edge. The property is owned by RNC and has already received approval from the planning and zoning board for the proposed commercial use. And so with that, staff recommends approval of the site plan for 244 West Story Road. With staff conditions, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can you get him to buy the corner on the west of them there too?
What would that go to there?
We can buy them forever with. Questions from the commission? Certainly approved from the community store that used to be there. Any questions, we need a motion. A motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Well, now, this is the city commission and convening as a community redevelopment agency. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is Wilder, Mr. Captain. Yes, sir. So in order to avoid progress delay and move the Xander's Park upgrades along, the city pre-approved both a proposal and an invoice from the Murray Design Group for the required conceptual design work of the open gathering space area next to the baller pool. The pool's work was estimated at $33,330, and the invoice paid by the general fund for the completed work was $20,020. The ongoing Xander's Park amenity upgrades are significant for the historic East Winter Garden neighborhood and have been one of the first visible signs of improvements towards a community's overall revitalization effort. The DA staff recommends approving the cost reimbursement of the city's general fund by the CRAA for the conceptual design work completed by Murray Design Group in the amount of $20,020. I can answer any questions.
Any questions?
Let's just deal.
Any other comments from Ms. Wilder or Mr. Captain?
Now, your advisory board reviewed this. I think we reviewed it back when they originally did the purchase, and the money's already spent, so there's not, not much choice. Wild, would you like to move the [inaudible]? So on behalf of the CRA advisory board, I recommend that we reimburse the cost of the city general fund in the amount of $20,020 for the design in Xander's Park.
We have a second.
I second that motion.
Okay, we do have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, this motion carried unanimously. Anything else? Ms. Wilder, I just want to say.
As I say, just it's good to be here.
It's good to have you here.
The [inaudible]?
Yes.
Okay, we haven't seen the lightning yet, but we heard [inaudible].
It's coming.
I know we're not the absence.
Sorry, heading for the guards, huh? Okay, we will now, this is it, as a CRA, and move back to the city commission. Matters from citizens of Winter Garden.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm going to discuss a topic that's not often talked about, stray cats. Bondi said, "The greatness of a nation and its moral progress can be judged by the way its animals are treated." He believed that animals have inherent value and advocated for their proper care and management. My name is Christina, and I am a volunteer for Pet Alliance Community Cat Initiative. This is a trap neuter vaccinate return program of stray cats. I am here to express gratitude to the city of Winter Garden and its commission for its support of TNVR. The number of community cats in Winter Garden is unknown. Research by PetSmart Charities recommends the formula of dividing the human population by 15 for an estimate of community cats in an area. For Winter Garden's population of 50,000, roughly, that would place the estimate at 3,000. Community cats are about 190 cats per square mile. The average cat has one to eight kittens per litter and two to three litters per year. They can start giving birth at four to five months. Left unaltered, one pair of cats and their offspring could produce more than 400,000 kittens in just seven years. Without intervention, the numbers are unsustainable. Methods of intervention. Eliminating or removing cats is not only cruel, it creates a vacuum effect. The vacuum effect is a scientific phenomenon where the removal of animals from an area causes a temporary void. This attracts other species of animals and the same species to move back in and occupy the same place, space. This phenomenon is observed across all animal types. Simply killing or removing them does not permanently reduce overpopulation. TNVR is the humane efficient solution. It helps control the cat overpopulation, improves the lives of community cats, and ensures the safety of people who encounter them. The V in TNVR stands for vaccination against rabies and FBRCP, which safeguard both cats and residents. With all this new development going on, animals are being displaced, and that exposes our cats and possible people to some of these diseases. Current TNVR options. Folks can undertake their own trap neuter return. This entails obtaining a tracking permit from Orange County, acquiring traps, knowledge about the tracking process, paying for veterinary appointments, finding veterinary appointments, transportation to and from those appointments, and providing space for cats recovering from their surgeries. Orange County Animal Services is another choice. They offer a TNVR program. Each address is permitted up to five cats per year to be TNVR'd. Their waiting list is very long. A single truck is loaned for up to two weeks, but individuals are still required to trap the cats themselves. The best option is the partnership between the city of Winter Garden and Pet Alliance, which began in June of 2023. Since then, a dedicated team of Pet Alliance volunteers has successfully TNVR'd almost 600 cats, 587 to be exact, and over 100 kittens have been saved, fostered, and adopted. Now that is something to talk about. Thank you once again, city commissioners and city of Winter Garden for partnering with Pet Alliance and supporting TNVR.
Would you repeat the numbers one more time, please? That's what I wrote down for all of.
587 cats.
You've done a few more than we have, but. Thank you.
I do, I do.
Over 100 kittens.
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah. Now I'm going to just say thank you again. Thank you, Lucy, we appreciate all that you have made.
Thank you.
Really big.
It's a great program. We covered it in Box Populite, phenomenal partnership. Good evening, all. My name is Norrie Dorkin. I'm the editor in chief of Box Populite, wintergardenvox.com. During the budget hearing, you all mentioned a term, zero-based budgeting. For those of us who don't speak budget, would you be so kind as to explain what that means?
That would mean, so I guess I'll have to answer that question.
Yeah, please. You mentioned that it was a new process, and why is that important?
What it does is if you don't follow the traditional of starting from last year's budget numbers and then adjusting up and downs, we basically zero out all of the requests, and then we place a priority on the requests for expenditures and evaluate them based on that priority. It's essentially what we get from a zero-based budget. Lauren, did I answer that correctly?
Very helpful, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Sarah Wolf, 5114. Do you have a question? Where do we get the grants from? Are they federal, state, county, city? We don't grant money to ourselves, or private. Where do we get these grants from?
State. We can take, we love taking any kind of grant, or are there limitations?
The grants, the $30 million worth of grants were primarily state FDP grants, the CDBJ. The CDBJG grant was a grant that came through the county, but it was federal funding for Hurricane Bill. So we did pursue federal and state grants, or again, there are other local grants that we did pursue.
Are there county or private grants? I'm just curious.
Not necessarily county or private grants, but I've not really ran across many private grants for, like, utility improvements, but there are private grants that are out there and available, but not necessarily from the water supply and expansion, major utility project that I don't work.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners. Good evening. Ken Brown, 432 New Harbor Circle. First of all, I want to say thank you to our building and our permanent department. I got three of them in the process of proof and inspected, so I got one more to go, so keep up the good work. I appreciate it. I am, I've kind of changed direction tonight after hearing the 2.2 million deficit the city's facing in 2026. And knowing what you guys painfully are going to go through in the budget process, I've changed direction. I was going to complain about Halloween Fest. I'm not going to. I'm not going to go to. However, thinking about Halloween Fest and thinking about all the festivities, festivals, things that go on within the city of Winter Garden, I started thinking about a possible solution. And before I talk about the possible solution, I want to ask a question. Do we have an event coordinator that works for the city of Winter Garden? We do? Okay, great. Perfect. Great start. There's a lot to, Commissioner?
Just Collins behind.
Thank you, Collins, because I can't read the last name. You know, there's a lot of folks talking about the festivals. I know some are, some people want some, some people don't want some, they, some people don't want to pay taxes towards them, and you want to keep the middle rate down. There's a collision of people and concerns about the festivals and what goes on within the city. Instead of saying we're not going to have any and then decide which ones we're going to have, to the mayor's point, everybody's going to want one of them, so that's going to be a tough road to hoe. However, if we have an event coordinator, one of their responsibilities should be to go out to the public, to both the nonprofits, the businesses, to ask for sponsorships to pay for these festivals. They benefit the city, they benefit the residents, they benefit our businesses. There's no reason in the world why a city should be paying 100% of an event within the city. There's sponsorship opportunities, and it works because they get advertisement, they get, people recognize them for supporting our city, and especially ones that benefit from these festivals. Their sponsorships are available. There's also an opportunity for some of these nonprofits to maybe make some money for their, whatever their, you know, chamber or the American Legion, anything, possibly allow them to put some booths up to make some money. So what I would recommend, instead of 86 and all of our festivals and starting from zero and deciding which ones we're going to have and which ones we're not going to have, let's get our event coordinator to work to try to get some sponsorships to pay for these festivals that benefit the city. That's kind of what I, I was going to really hammer you guys on that. So that's all. We'll thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Sorry you missed that opportunity.
You guys have to work.
Yeah, anyone else?
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City of Winter Garden. I'd like to address a few issues when it comes to, like, infrastructure. So one of the first things we have a retention pond that's failing on Tiny Road and Tilden Road as well. It's near the south campus of, like, Foundation. One of the retention ponds, Dorn Storm's, is not holding in its water, and so Dorn Storm's, it keeps leaking on the street, and they did put a drainage on the other side of the street, but it's not serving its purpose, the pond, and I'm wondering if you guys can go and investigate into that. Another issue I want to address is installing a smart lane where there's a Tilden Mill 535 meets. It's near, like, this Walgreens CDSS that's in that corner because some traffic builds up there, and when that happens, a lot of people build up on turn lanes and they're not able to turn into a shopping plaza. And so what happens is that people are coming off, like, the highway that's there, 535, it's causing traffic on one of the lanes blocking, so a lot of people, like, don't make the light and then build up traffic, like, all the way to the plaza of Winter Garden. Another issue I want to address is, when are we going to do the repavement of South Dillon Street is what I want to know, because they brought it up, like, the redevelopment of South Dillon Street, of how it's going to be, like, one lane up, one lane down, pedestrian friendly. It's not happening because of the budget? Okay.
My opinion.
Yeah, yeah, because I saw, I saw them in the budget tie-ups or in the meeting. One of my solutions to the budget is being more funded through the commercial industry, like, small and big businesses coming into the city. So I believe what we can do is, like, maybe a little bit of, like, tax exemptions of, like, smaller businesses and try to pull them into the city, be like, hey, we can host these events, you guys can come here. And like, some plazas, like the Stony Brook Plaza, has some empty spaces, and I'm wondering if, like, it's possibly too high up, or where you guys charge, if you guys can lower it down, or pull in the businesses to come in there so people can come and shop. Another plaza that I believe can get, like, redeveloped into a mixed-use plaza is the Tri-State Shopping Center on 50. That, I believe, we can, like, turn into a mixed-use development, because Big Lots recently moved out of there, and if I'm right, it's just remaining empty right now, and they don't get, like, maximum peak of business. So what we can do, if we can have, like, first and second, like, if we make it a multi-story building, we can have first and second floor be, like, commercial businesses and the top be residential and, like, have a parking garage so we don't have, like, a huge, like, parking lot, and we can serve, like, more people while generating more money for the city. Another issue I want to address is the postal service, which I assume would come from, like, state budget and also, like, federal budget in DC, is our shot, a postal service, I don't believe they have, like, maximum efficiency of, like, delivering mail, because when I like, yeah, 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 it is. I had a feeling this, I would, like, say, reach, I addressed this on the state level a while ago as well, and they, they said that it's even higher, and so I was wondering if you guys have interest in this in the argument. The other thing I wanted to address is the quality of our construction within our city. So we have rapid construction that's been happening for the past few years. I went and been moving to Florida, I went and been moving to Winter Garden, we became a hotspot. And so because of that, a lot of our houses, we, we are hurricane prone, say, we get hit with hurricanes constantly. A lot of our houses are being built up, like OSB wouldn't frame it on the first one, we're back and we're going to work on, like, cinder blocks and construction. And a lot of these fast buildings are having problems with, like, chicken concrete or inside interior walls in that property place, they're misaligned, and I've seen this, like, with businesses, like, for example, holistic dentists, one of my dentists I go to, she has misaligned walls, she has cracked concrete, but there's also a couple of businesses I went to around Winter Garden that face the same exact issue as well, and I'm wondering what's happening to the quality control of our buildings, of not only of our homes, but our businesses, and I'm wondering if we can address that as well, if we can get it, like, stabilized again. And the last issue I want to address is the energy cost increase of how we're going to address that as a city of Winter Garden of energy costs, because, like, electricity's rising, water bill's rising, and I understand it's, like, summer and we're addressing, like, a lot more people are using the AC, it's pushing an electrical grid, and I'm wondering what are we going to do as a city to address this for us? Do you guys have any recommendations?
Well, we tried with Duke Energy, they owned all the poles and everything, so that's a problem.
Yes, probably.
Yeah, that might be, well, probably the last ten years has doubled, so we all agree with you on that.
For other means of transportation, do you guys consider anything like light rail, more bike lanes, or anything like that to ease up the traffic?
I don't have to budget for that.
No, you guys.
Okay.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Matters from City Attorney?
Don't report there, mistress.
Say an energy.
Very briefly, I printed out a list of downtown Halloween activities that will be occurring this year, just for reference for you, and that information is also available on the city website, and I have nothing for, other than to say again, congratulations to Norrie and all of our staff. We certainly appreciate all the hard work and dedication that you put into preparing this proposed budget. It's not been one of the most easiest budget process, and you guys have all done a great job in coming and sitting down and tolerating my questions and challenging you on your requests, so we do this to all of the gentlemen.
Commissioner Sharp?
I would first like to thank young man that got in spoke, because it's nice to see some young getting involved, engaged. Out of the issues that you did list, a few do fall within the city, but most do not, and I'll sit with you afterwards and kind of go through those, but thank you for coming and making the young boys heard. I want to just quick recap. So two weeks ago, I was connecting with a person and got to give them some advice, and then I had to learn and follow that own advice. The advice was, you really don't know what somebody's thinking unless you ask them. You can think, like, a wife or a family member, you're so close to them that you know, but until you ask them, you really don't know. And I got the opportunity to ask somebody, you know, to ask a relative or theirs what they needed and help them in a tough time. And then I had a challenge at work, and I stepped, because I was assuming that I knew how they thought, and I stepped back and asked and helped them to do some stuff. So I had a flow of, what I would consider spiritual influence with me, and you should be able to feel it. Thank you, guys.
I just want to mimic what John said. Thank you to our staff and to Norrie for always going above and beyond for our city. You guys really show that you care. I did cheer with John. I had one of my residents, one of my constituents in East Winter Garden call my personal phone to say, like, the city don't care about us, and I told her, like, you cannot say that because you don't come to our meetings or you don't come to ask these questions. And then when I broke it down to her, she apologized, so thank you, staff, for always going to extra mile, and thank you to John, too, for all that you guys do for our city of Winter Garden.
Commissioner Trump?
I also want to say thank you, because we had a couple of our people calling us in reference to the rain that we had in the floods, and I think I passed the information to you, and within hours, everybody was kind of making sure that the water was gone, and so the response was amazing. I appreciate that very much, and also for everything you guys did for the budget and all the time you guys put in. Thank you very much. And also, I was very happy to see everybody participating in the city, because when you guys come into the meetings and you give us feedbacks, it makes us see what people want, and that makes us better to understand what we're doing as a commissioner. Like that Collins said, we don't know what you guys want, what you guys think, unless you guys come to the meetings and there's no. And thank you. It's inspiring to see young people coming in. I hope that more people come in and thank you for the suggestions.
Commissioner Ben?
I agree with that. We took on some really big topics, and it's impressive. Continue. And thank you very much to staff. Your job is not easy, and you make our job so much easier than though we have a lot of homework. I appreciate you.
But it's fun. No, we do want to thank John, Norrie, and Sarah, that we did just not a great job. It's a lot of work, and, but it is interesting. So with that, as we go through this week, remember the people in Minneapolis, which is tragic. I really don't know what's wrong with people. Just keep them in your prayers and thoughts, because it's essential. So with that, we will adjourn.